I have to. How many did I? Don't you have the list? Jen said you had the list. This was last week we did this. You weren't on the call, I know. A quorum of twenty-five voters being present, this special town meeting is called to order. Good evening. For those of you entering the auditorium, please find a seat quietly. As I have done since I became moderator, I have asked a veteran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Ashland Police Department Officer Ryan Pujo enlisted in the US Army in 2006 as a combat engineer and completed basic training at Fort Leonard Wood. In 2010, he deployed to Afghanistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. During his tour, he earned several awards, including the Army Accommodation Medal and a Combat Action Badge. He was honorably discharged in 2013 while holding the rank of Sergeant. During his time in the military, he earned a bachelor's degree in criminology from Prehemiham State University and subsequently joined the Ashland Police Department in 2014. After the military, he started a nonprofit called Rifles to Rods where they use fishing as a form of therapy for veterans transitioning back to civilian life. Officer Pujo, where? There you are. Please rise to the pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. On behalf of all of Ashland, thank you for your service.
Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate tonight. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a Board of Selectmen or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland. And tonight, we are sitting in legislative session. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster, and I am the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the presiding officer of this legislature. I believe that part of my job is also to ensure that those here in attendance understand what is going on. So I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary. If at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. Additionally, I feel that I have an obligation to provide a fair opportunity for voters to be heard and discuss the issues. You need to also respect your time and avoid lengthy and repetitious debate. I will do my best to strike a clear balance. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderator Association and generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me at the front of the auditorium are members of the school committee, members of the select board, members of the finance committee, town council Adam Costa, town manager Michael Herbert, assistant town manager Jen Ball, finance director town accountant Brittany Yaccaponi, Brittany, there she is, APS superintendent Jim Adams, and is Barbara here? Nope, then we won't introduce her. With me onstage are town clerk Tara Warden, assistant town clerk Cindy Livingstone. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those watching us. When you checked in this evening, you received a blue index card. It is important that you hang on to these cards, as you will not be able to vote without them. Because votes will be counted based on display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I am unable to do so, we have tellers that will perform an actual vote count. Tonight's tellers will be sworn in if they're needed. Please ensure that you have turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you have to take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. A special note, I know that there's childcare in the other room. If at any time you need to leave to rescue your child, feel free to bring them back in here. If, God forbid, we go past nine o'clock, they're welcome here. They'll probably better behave than some of the people in the room. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before a town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amendment in an article are listed in the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address and direct all your remarks to the moderator. Please keep your comments brief and ensure that they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand, and I will have a microphone brought to you when it's your turn to speak. To ensure we are able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one ninety-second turn at the microphone during discussion of each article. Time permitting, speakers may return to the microphone for a second time, once all others wishing to speak have done so, but that second term will be limited to one minute. If you are responding to a question, please do so through the moderator. There should be no direct discussion between parties at a town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask that everyone refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. Of course, at the end, when we adjourn, it's a free-for-all. We have fifteen articles in the warrant, and they will be addressed one way or the other before we leave this evening. The biggest complaint I get every town meeting is how long it takes us to get through our business. As such, I'm going to work hard to keep things moving along tonight. A few announcements, probably first and foremost, good luck clockers on Saturday. We're all rooting for you. The Ashland Farmers Market will return for one more day this Saturday from nine to one at Ashland Medical Middle School Cafeteria. Head down and get everything you need for your Thanksgiving meal. I do a lot of my Thanksgiving shopping there, and I can test them with the quality and variety of products. The annual holiday tree lighting festival will take place December seventh, and the community menorah lighting is December twenty-second. These are both great events for the whole family. I encourage everyone to attend. Moderators' motions. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard of motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderator's motions one, two, three, and four as printed in the handbook?
No moves.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That motion passes. Onto our business for tonight. Article one, hear report of town manager. To see if the town will hear any report of the town manager or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. Glad to have you tonight. If it's your first town meeting, I want to welcome you here on behalf of the town. And if it's not your first town meeting, welcome back. Typically, what I do before town meeting is I give an update on a few of the warrant articles that have been passed previously. As you all know, there's usually a big buildup to the warrant articles and a big buildup to the vote. But then what happens after it's passed, sometimes it feels like some of these projects go into a black hole. The fact is, is that once it's passed at town meeting, that's probably one-tenth of the way to actually getting a project completed. So just wanted to do this as a public service and let you know the progress on some of these warrant articles that have been passed previously. I'd like to first start with the Rail Transit District. Those of you that were here in the fall of 2018 know that we passed a couple warrant articles related to this, purchasing the Rail Transit District, which in turn triggered a couple of other events as well. So first was the donation of the property to the YMCA, a twelve-and-a-half-acre parcel, so the Metro West YMCA could do a new regional facility here that would serve Ashland, Holliston, and Hopkinton. I'm pleased to say that that has been completed, and so the YMCA is now getting to work on developing a programming schedule, and then also will start the work of developing, you know, donations and the engineering and things necessary to get this completed. They are conducting a survey right now, the Metro West YMCA, asking you what you would like to see in your new YMCA. So if you have an opportunity, please go to the Metro West YMCA website and fill out that survey so you can find out, so you can share with them what you would like to see in your new YMCA. We're also working with a developer known as United Group of Companies to do a senior affordable housing unit on Lot Two. That is a thirty-eight-acre lot. We're looking at a development that would in turn give us back, give the town back twenty-four acres of open space. Conversations about that are ongoing. And then actually, we have, part of the section that we have secured is for the Upper Charles Trail. It's a specific section known as the Trolley Brook Trail, and we will actually have a vote on an article related to that later tonight. Second, I want to give you an update on downtown, the progress downtown. That was voted on at the 2019 annual town meeting. I think we had about four hundred people there for that. Those of you that drove through downtown know that we have started the work. We did the water line replacement and relining of Main Street and Summer Street. We're still working with our engineer and Eversource, which is always fun, to get the streetscape design finalized and hopefully out to bid in February. So if all things go well, you can expect some work and some traffic inconveniences starting in the summer of next year. So just remember, it's going to look great when it's all done, while you're like, you know, stuck in gridlock. Next, I just wanted to give an update on the Riverwalk Project. This is probably the most visible project that's happened. You know, with special thanks to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, Assistant Town Manager Jim Ballen, or DPW, everybody has seen the bridge that has been erected over Mill Pond Park, and I think it's a great addition to town. Many of you had the opportunity to experience that in the fall, or at least look at it, not necessarily cross it. But it's something that's a jewel for the community, and will actually, it actually connected the previous section, which was a section of the actual trail and the observation deck. And we'll actually, later tonight, we'll have an article related to finishing that project up, and then also an article related to some improvements at Mill Pond Park. The next one is actually an older one, the MWR connection. How many of you were here for that vote in 2017? Excellent. You still came back two years later. This is great. So obviously, this project has taken a little while. There's been a lot of red tape involved with it. I'm pleased to say that we have now received permission from the Metro West, or the Massachusetts Water Resources Commission to do the hookup. We've also received approval from the state legislature and the governor's office for approval as well. We have received bids to start constructing that actual connection in the town of Southborough, which is scheduled to be completed next year. And so by June of next year, we should actually have a supplemental water connection. So hopefully, we won't have any water bans anymore. And then finally, just wanted to give an update on the Mendez School. That was from the 2018 annual town meeting. We've entered into the MSBA process. This is the Massachusetts School Building Authority process, which in turn makes us eligible for reimbursement for the eligible costs that we incur in this project. Since then, the school department, the school committee, and the Mendez School Building Committee has gone through the process of hiring what's known as an owner's project manager, and then also an architect. We've had several input sessions from the public related to this, what we would like to see in a renovated or new Mendez School. And I am compelled to remind you that the next forum that we're going to have regarding this is actually going to be on Monday, the twenty-fifth. And I'm not exactly sure where that's going to be, Jim? In the Mendez Cafeteria. So hopefully, we'll get to see you there. All right? And so that's the report.
Thank you, Mike. Before I move on, for folks sitting up in the balcony, rows, let's say, two through five, between my eyesight and the lack of light, I'm having a little trouble seeing you, so please make sure you raise your cards really high when we vote. Thank you. Article two, adjust fiscal year 2020 appropriations sponsored by the town manager and finance director. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the treasury some money to be added to or to make adjustments to Article Three of the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting Fiscal Year 2020 budget or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. There are two adjustments, one for the fire department and one for the school department, as you see in your handbook. The finance committee recommends that townsow vote to adjust the FY 2020 budget appropriation as proposed. Ms. Yaccaponi.
Thank you. So in this article, the town is requesting to appropriate $189,753. And this is due to the increase in state aid that the town was fortunate enough to receive this past fiscal year. We had an increase of about $50,000 in state aid, a decrease in state assessments of $73,000, and savings in our KEVE Tech assessment of approximately $67,000. So the total increase in state aid with our savings and assessments came to the $189,753. We are requesting that $56,926 go towards our fire department, and that is to help the fire department with a SAFI grant that we received, a $750,000 federal grant. And $132,827 is being requested for the school department.
Thank you, Brittany. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that town vote to adjust the FY 2020 budget appropriations as proposed. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. This requires a simple majority, all in favor of the motion Article Two. Please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Three, free cash allocation sponsored by the town manager and finance director. See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to replace destabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, special education, special purpose stabilization account, capital account, capital stabilization account under FY 20 budgetary line items as indicated in the chart in the warrant handbook, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends that the townsow vote. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm actually going to defer to the finance director to start this one.
Thank you, Michael. So Article Two is kind of a recurring article now, every year, our free cash appropriation. So what free cash is, is it's leftover funds from our previous year's budget. So in this case, NFY nineteen, we had $2,796,829 remaining in the budget. This article specifically is requesting only $2.4 million be appropriated. The remaining $300,000 in free cash is part of Article Five, which we voted on later on. Free cash consists of revenue that came in, in excess of what was budgeted, and unspent funds that departments did not utilize for various reasons, such as vacancies within their department. So several years ago, the town established financial policies to determine how free cash was to be allocated. The policies were agreed upon by the school committee, finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen. So first, according to our policy, we appropriate the amount necessary to keep our general stabilization fund at ten percent of budgeted revenues. This year, that amount comes to $235,000. This appropriation will hopefully bring our stabilization fund to a little over $6.5 million. So next, per our policy, we're requesting to appropriate thirty percent of the remainder of free cash towards our OPEB trust fund. So OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is for retirees' health insurance. So there's no requirement to establish a trust fund, but the town has established one a few years ago. It helps us with our credit rating, and it also helps us maintain our AAA credit rating. And when we go to borrow funds, we get the best interest rate possible. So the amount this year came to $768,548, and this appropriation will bring our trust fund balance to $2.6 million, which is approximately 5.7 percent of our long-term liability. Third, we're requesting to appropriate $1.493,280 to capital or one-time expenses. The $1.4 million will consist of $708,765, which were capital items deferred from the May 2019 annual town meeting, which are also part of our five-year capital plan. $500,000 is being requested to be appropriated to our capital stabilization fund. $144,515 for Riverwalk Mill Pond improvements. $50,000 for electronic signs downtown and at the high school. And $90,000 for the Trolley Brook Trail survey and design.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town to vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $235,000 to the stabilization fund, a sum of $768,548.70 to the OPEB trust fund, a sum of $708,765 to the capital account, a sum of $144,515.30 to the Riverwalk Mill Pond Improvements Project, a sum of $50,000 for electric signs, a sum of $90,000 for Upper Charles Trail, Trolley Brook Trail Survey Engineering, and a sum of $500,000 to the capital stabilization account. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. This requires, we'll move to a simple, to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Wait, 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 wait. I knew they were coming. We have some students here who have asked to speak on this article. So, folks?
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Ben Pepper. I'm the student council president. As student council, we work to bring the community together through major events such as Bingo Night and Pancake Breakfast. And all of our fundraising events go either to local charities, such as the Ashland Emergency Fund, or the money is put directly back into the school, such as through what we're trying to work on right now, an electronic sign for the front of the school. We've been working for the past couple of years to do this project, and we're really hoping that you will allow us to see it through.
Thank you.
We have raised $10,000 through various student council and events throughout the community over the years. Karen Dunn, some other parents in the town have generously matched our donation, and all we ask is for money for the installation and electronic fees.
You can move it down. It's okay.
Oh, thank you.
Or just tilt it down.
Yeah. Our current sign is a safety concern in that rather being located at the entrance of the school, it's located at the exit, which can confuse people from other towns and increase the risk of accidents at our school. And an added danger is for those who are changing the letters in front of the school, which me and my friend Jillian have had to do, and she'll talk to you about that.
Our current sign is falling apart. When Bridgette and I changed the letters on the sign, we experienced dangerously heavy screens, sliding letters, and rusting nails, all of which are hazardous. And for that reason, the sign isn't utilized as much as it could be unless messages are displayed to the community.
This new sign will allow us to display more than one message, allowing us to advertise both school-wide events and community events.
Sorry. We really hope you consider helping find the installation electrical work of the sign, as we really believe that it would help greatly benefit Ashland as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm always impressed by the quality of our younger residents when they speak here. So thank you for coming and joining us tonight and speaking to us. Seeing nothing further, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Four, property tax exemption sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July one, for, I'm sorry, for any fiscal year beginning July one, 2019, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends that town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to 9.75 percent to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July one, 2019. Mr. Mignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't know, can you guys hear me? Okay. If not, I'll have to use my police voice. This is not something new. This is an exemption that we do every year. This year, we have increased the exemption percentage for our seniors. And I just want to quickly remind the seniors who are at least sixty-five years of age prior to July first of 2019, you must, some of the qualifying factors are you have to have, you must be the owner of the property for at least five years, and you and your wife or spouse must have occupied that property for a minimum of ten years, and your combined income must be less than $58,000 for the two, for two individuals. So those are some of the qualifying factors. I know a lot of seniors don't take part in this program, and I wish they would. I know it's not a lot, but it's increasing, it's been increasing every year. And this year, it's gone up about, what, fifteen percent, Michael? Maybe a little bit more? And we ask for your support, and hopefully this will help get everything that we need to do to help our seniors stay in town and help pay off some of the tax exemption and tax abatements that they so richly deserve after supporting the town over the number of years that they've lived here. So I ask for your support on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mignani. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town to vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to 9.75 percent to be effective for exemptions granted for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2019. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, which will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. I don't think I've ever had a vote against this article. That passes unanimously. Unanimously. Articles five and six are related, and we will take them up together. Because Article Five is only necessary with the approval of Article Six, we'll take up Article Six first. After the introduction of Article Six, we'll have an explanation of both Article Five and Article Six, followed by a single discussion of both articles. After the discussion, we'll vote on Article Six. Assuming Article Six passes, I'll introduce Article Five and seek an immediate motion and vote on Article Five. Article Six, approved development restriction to 378 Elliott Street sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the restrictive covenant for the land numbered 378 Elliott Street, to limit the number of homes to no more than one per acre, and in exchange, raise and, exchange therefore, raise and appropriate or transfer by borrowing or otherwise, a sum of money sufficient to pay for said restriction. And further, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept said development restriction and authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into and negotiate all agreements necessary to effectuate same or take any action, other action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town accept the restrictive covenant for 378 Elliott Street and to transfer $10,000 from the sewer enterprise fund to pay for said restriction as partial reimbursements for sewer betterment costs paid by the owner. Mr. Shear.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everyone hear me? All right, okay. Yep. These two articles, of course, work together.
We watched the video.
There'll be representatives from the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission will speak in some detail as the characters of this land. I just want to give an overview of the Select Board's approach to this. As we, you know, as we approach build-out in this town, we keep our eye out for opportunities to take control of land that we think it's appropriate for the town to, to, to purchase or control, whether it's for open space or affordable housing or commercial development. And this is one of those cases that came to our attention a few years ago, as land that is most appropriate to remain at open space. The developer was intending to build residential units there, and as a result, concerns raised to keep the land as open space and also some wetlands issues and to provide recreation for that part of town. Zero Tri Street is between Route 126 and Elliott Street, and I think we have a, this is the locust map of the parcel, and the upper one is the Zero Tri Street, and the lower one is the, is the restrictive covenant land. And the reason, and the Select Board charged the town manager to negotiate with both land owners. with both landowners, and I think that we have a very good deal here after some hard bargain that went on really for months and maybe over a year. And the restrictive covenant, the sole purpose of that as a cooperative landowner is to limit development in that area, because of course, if the town buys the open space, that makes the budding parcels even more valuable for development, because everyone wants to live near open space. So, that's, this, both articles are key to be done together, because we want to restrict residential development in that area for a number of reasons. So, I would say, so, just to sum up the, the board's position on this, this is one of our priority acquisitions. It's on the open space priority list for open space and recreation as opposed to other forms of development. And so, we would urge, oh, is there another? Michael, did you have another thing on wetlands joining us that we want to look at, or? Is there another slide on the?
Yes.
Okay, so, this-
Can you describe this?
Yeah, this kind of, this shows the, the, part of, part of the reason that came to our attention from the Conservation Commission is the complex wetlands issues, and this is a key part of the, the wetlands area, in, in that area. So, what I think we have here is the, the affected wetlands from this parcel, and so it has a number of, I don't know, Michael, do you want to explain anything else about this?
About, about this?
About particular? No.
No, I'll answer questions.
Okay. So, with that said, the Select Board will ask your support for this article. We think it's one of the key measures that we're taking to protect the quality of life in this town, and appreciate your support. Thank you.
It looks like a gerrymandered political district.
That's why we like it.
Thank you, Rob. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the restrictive covenant for the land known as and numbered 378 Elliott Street, Ashland, Middlesex County, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, conveyed by deed recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 24,575, page 11, and dated May 18, 1994, to limit the number of units to no more than one per acre, and in exchange therefore, and transfer ten thousand dollars from sewer enterprise fund to pay for said restriction. Further, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept said development restriction and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into and negotiate all agreements necessary to effectuate same. Do I have such a motion? Mr. DeSoni.
Good evening, Dr. DeSoni. Stop my clock, please.
What?
Got to stop my clock.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to go by the roof sometimes. Okay. I wanted to ask, with the wetlands restrictions, how long would this, the wetland restrictions be used for? Are they limited for time, or is this for expectations that they're going to not be used at all?
Mr. Herbert.
So, wetland regulations and restrictions do not have a time limit. They, they would change if the regulations were changed, or if the statute of the Wetlands Protection Act was changed, but I don't foresee that happening.
Okay, so, within the last forty seconds, I would probably say I'd be voting for it, but I'm hoping that the neighborhoods won't be too crowded at the end. Thank you.
Dr. Hoffman.
Curtis Hoffman, 58 Hilldale Road. I see in the text accompanying Article five that the Zero Tri Street, um, parcel is listed as consisting of nine-point-five acres. What is the acreage of the 378 Elliott Street parcel, and how many houses could potentially be built on it with this restriction?
Mr. Herbert.
Okay. So, like you said, Zero Tri Street's nine-and-a-half acres. 378 Elliott Street is just slightly under six acres. If you utilize traditional zoning, nine single-family homes could be, could be constructed there. However, a 40B development proposal could come forward, and you could be looking at something more dense, like a 40 to 60 development proposal there. The good thing about a deed restriction that runs on the land is that it prevents anything like that from happening. 40B overrides zoning, local zoning regulations, but it doesn't override restrictions that run with the land.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Crowe.
Yes, I believe on Article six, it mentions that money is coming from the sewer enterprise fund. Could that be explained why that is the source of funds?
Sure. Mr. Herbert.
Yep. So, the ten thousand dollar figure actually is the payoff of the remaining sewer betterment charges for the property. They're currently, the owner's currently paying for three sewer hookups, even though he only has one, one house there. So, this essentially just washes that, makes it clean.
Okay. And are we discussing Article five and six together?
Yes, we are.
I'd like to comment on Article five on the Zero Tri Street. The planning board did not discuss and weigh in on this. However, we did have a proposed development on the Zero Tri Street lot a year or two ago, and I won't go into all the details, but it, it was bad, and I'm really happy to not be seeing something coming back there.
Sir.
Yes, James Morris, City Voyagers Lane. Press, Mr. Herbert, can I answer this question? I'm just looking for some, some context here, some larger context or additional context. I know that there are some additional unimproved lots here. Some are fairly sizable. There's a fairly large rectangular one off to the right, parallel to Adams Road. There's one, a narrow head-shaped one wedged between the two parcels in question, small rectangular one bound by Tri Elliott and what appears to be Tri Spur. And there's a very small, de minimis lot off of Tri, up underneath the larger of the two lots we've been discussing. Does the town have any inkling as to what, what's going on with those? Are we looking at potential more purchases of either easements or covenants or outright land purchases with regard to these other lots?
Mr. Herbert.
Potentially. The one that you referenced that's on the left, that's pretty much all covered with wetland, so it really would be undeveloped. I think even squeezing a 40B project would be difficult there. But we are keeping our, an eye on it, as we are the one that's across the street from Adams Road as well. So, they're currently, I don't have any, haven't received any kind of information that it could be for sale or anything like that. In fact, I think it's probably, I believe it's in tax title right now, but, you know, it's something that we'll continue to monitor.
Thank you. Ms. Stillman.
I'm getting shorter all the time, yeah. Roberta Stillman, 28 Woodridge Lane, the Chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Talking about five and six together, the Open Space and Recreation Committee voted at its meeting on Monday night to unanimously endorse the purchase of Zero Tri Street and the development restriction on 378 Elliott. And we just wanted to share our reasons for why we thought that Zero Tri Street was so very important. On the Open Space and Recreation Plan update, we rate land, and we give them points on a scale of zero to eight. And this land got a seven for the following reasons.
Roberta, eight's the top of the scale?
Yes, I'm sorry. Zero is the bottom, eight is the top. And it scored a seven due to its conservation priorities, adjacency to existing open space beneficial to wildlife, that it was a wetland resource area, the scenic view, and its location in a part of town that's lacking open space. So, it was an issue of environmental equity as well as the state defines it. We also feel that with a lot of trees being cut down to do various things around town, it's really important to maintain trees and wetlands, which help to remove carbon from the atmosphere and help to mitigate and protect against some of the devastating effects of climate change. For the cost of community services, for open space, for every dollar you receive in revenue, you only spend thirty-four cents in this area to provide services, as opposed to for every dollar you, you receive in revenue, spending more than a dollar to provide services to residential property. So, even though we're paying for this property, in the end, it will cost us a lot less to have it as open space than to even have a development where people are paying taxes. The quality of life is important. A 40 to 60 unit development on that neighborhood, on those small, narrow streets, would just be devastating for that area and for, for those people, and for the traffic leading into Elliott Street as well, for the whole rest of the town. So, for all of these reasons, we highly endorse this unanimously, and we urge everyone here to vote in favor of Articles five and six. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. And I should have mentioned before Roberta started speaking, both for Roberta and for the next speaker, Carl, they got special dispensation over the minute and a half because they're representing town boards or committees. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Hackinson, 346 Chestnut Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission. These lots, particularly Zero Tri Street, has been before the Conservation Commission for a number of years. The Conservation Commission has identified it as ecologically sensitive property due to, do you have the other slide, Michael? This area that, where that we're looking at here, probably ought to put my glasses on, so I point to the correct area, is-
It came with a laser pointer.
Did you bring a pointer? Yeah. Passy, huh? What this, what this is here is the headwaters for all of this here. And that wetland system stretches through Ashland into Sherburn and into Framingham. It's a huge wetland complex, but the headwaters to it are right here. Zero Tri Street is right here, and it's an area that we've identified as ecologically sensitive, because what goes there is going to impact everything else downstream. It has a number of benefits, but that is the most important. We find that it's, it's a small area, but it certainly is ecologically sensitive in that a lot of that area is, is stressed now. A lot of the development in that part of the town would not be allowable under the current zoning or the current wetland regulations. And so, what's left needs to be protected in order to protect the wetlands that are still there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
My name's Ryan Leary. I'm on 18 Charles Street. If you go back to that-
Ryan, could you lift that? You're on the taller side. You want to lift that microphone up?
Yep, I got you. So, if you look at this map, top far-left corner, that's my little lot up there. And as Carl said, we're in a tiny little street, and anytime we get any type of heavy rain, we get a pool at the end of the street. Our yards fill up with water. There's drainage issues already, and we've been battling the adjacent side of the commercial property with encroaching in the wetlands already. So, as a resident in a, on that street, we would love to see the town purchase this property, because it, it's already stressed, I, I believe to the max. And I'm pretty sure from talking to the other neighbors that as of like seven years ago, it was designated a flood plain, and for insurance reasons, and I think five years ago, it got pulled out of the flood plain, but we're still dealing with a lot of water issues and runoff. So, it'd be great to see the town get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Articles five or six or five?
Hi, Matt Marshquist, speaking here on behalf of the Sustainability Committee. For the reasons that have already been iterated, we endorsed the purchase of Tri Street and the deed restriction on 238 Elliott Street.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move right to a vote. Given that this involves the acquisition of an interest in land, it will require a two-thirds majority. We'll start with a vote by cards. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article five, approved purchase-taking of land Zero Tri Street sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate either by appropriation, borrowing or otherwise, a sum of money to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary. The property located off of Tri Street totaled approximately nine-and-a-half acres. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for open space and recreation to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase and acquire the property of Zero Tri Street, as presented in the motion to protect against the potential development. Entertain a motion, after which we'll move to an immediate vote, that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to transfer, raise, and appropriate six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary. The property or any part thereof located in Ashland, Massachusetts, identified as these, those certain parcels of land off Tri Street totaled approximately nine-and-a-half acres plus or minus, located at Map 26 Lots 75 and 76, and as more fully set forth on the plan on file with the town clerk, and including Parcel A, and lots one to six inclusive collectively of the property. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for open space and recreation to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and to meet said appropriation, transfer three-hundred thousand dollars from free cash, and authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars under, under, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have such a motion? Given that this involves both the acquisition of land and borrowing, it will require a two-thirds majority. We'll start with a show of cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article seven, disposed of real property sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to change the use, which is currently general municipal, of 433 Chestnut Street, to the purpose of conveyance and/or transfer, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, transfer, or otherwise convey same, and to take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or transfer, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, including entering into a historic preservation restriction on the property, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting. In the early 1900s, Henry E. Warren settled in a farm in Ashland where he worked on developing and designing the electric clock prior to the creation of the Warren Clock Company. One of the farm buildings was converted into a workshop, and this is the property under discussion in Article seven. 433 Chestnut Street is part of, of a Warren District property purchase made in 2016, which also included the Warren Milking Barn. This article requests town meeting support for change in use from general municipal purposes to the purpose of conveyance and/or transfer, and to authorize the Select Board to sell the property with a further authorization to negotiate and enter into a historic preservation restriction. A historic restriction would impose obligations and duties on a new owner of the premises in order to protect the architectural and historical integrity of the building. The Select Board asks that town meeting vote to support Article seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I just want to be clear, I'm not being contrary by referring to the Board of Selectmen, but this is a legal proceeding, and the name of the board has not yet legally been changed. So, that's why I continue to refer to the Board of Selectmen, which I will stop doing as soon as the articles later on pass, assuming they pass. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the town vote to change the use, which is currently general municipal, of 433 Chestnut Street, more fully set forth on that certain plan by Philbin Land Survey, dated November 15, 2016, and which is on file with the town clerk, to the purpose of conveyance and/or transfer, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, transfer, or otherwise convey same, and take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or tran, or transfer, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, including entering into a historic preservation restriction on the property. Do I have such a motion? Mr. DeSoni.
We're quoting each other, right? Okay. Mark DeSoni again, and I got the historical man behind me. He would like to ask, once this is done here in town hall, how many other department boards are going to be going through, once it's, once it's going to be funded, and understanding what the land's going to be used for? What steps will happen after this town meeting?
Mr. Herbert, you want to take a shot?
So, we have issued an RFP, and a proposal has been submitted, and a purchaser has been chosen. That person will- chosen. That person will, after we effectuate the purchase and sale, that person will rehabilitate the house, return it to the tax rolls, but then will also put a permanent historical deed restriction on the property as well, so it can't be modified.
Okay, so then it's be all set, ready to go, and I know the person behind me is going to be saying, just go for it.
Why don't we let him make that call? Dr. Hoff?
Don't be too sure. Is this property currently listed on either the National or the State Register of Historic Places?
Mr. Herbert.
So this is listed with the Mass Historical Commission. It has a number. It was identified, actually, in 2010 as one of ten properties in Ashland that could potentially be on the National Register. So it's very important from that perspective.
All right. Is it on the State Register? Okay, the State Register is a lower threshold, and ordinarily, anything that goes on the National Register automatically goes on the State Register, but it might be easier to go for the State Register. So it's on their inventory, but not on the Register?
I'm not sure if it's—after it's assigned, a Mass Historical Commission number, if that means it's on the Register or not?
No, that means it's on their inventory.
Okay.
But you might want to see if, in the course of doing the transaction, you could get a State Register application filed for it, because without that, it becomes a little bit harder to put a historic preservation restriction on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank—Mr. Herbert?
I do just want to clarify. I think it's really important that we go for whatever status we can get for this property, but the historical deed restriction will be put in place, will be put on this property regardless of whether it achieves National Register or State Historic listing. That's an agreement between the landowner and the seller.
Okay. See no further discussion. We'll move to a vote. Given that this involves disposition of land, it will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. See, none that passes unanimously. I'm having trouble with the word unanimous tonight. Maybe we should have one person vote against and everything to make it easier on me. Preston, you want to be that person?
Okay.
Article Eight, authorized easements along Main Street sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise, a sum of money to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary, easements in the parcels of land located along Main Street and Front Street. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for municipal purposes or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Greaves?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. As part of our downtown beautification project, we need to acquire a few small parcels along Main Street by passing this article. It will allow us to do that, to continue on with our downtown beautification project that we, as a community, have supported at previous town meetings. We ask for your support in this motion, in this article.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion, the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise inappropriate $10,000 to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary, easements in the parcels of land located along Main Street and Front Street at 10 to 60 Main Street, approximately 446 square feet, 98 to 100 Main Street, approximately 273 square feet, 118 Main Street, approximately 370 square feet, 128 to 132 Main Street, approximately 191 square feet, 4 to 12 Front Street, 37 square feet. All is shown on a plan by the BSC Group dated May 6, 2019, and on file with the town clerk. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland and to be used for municipal purposes. Do I have such a motion?
So moved, sorry.
Discussion. Mr. Arbaitman?
Joel Arbaitman, Woodbridge Lane. First, I have a question. Is a map available so that we can actually understand what we're talking about here?
That's an excellent question.
Thank you.
Not to imply other questions aren't excellent, but I was wondering myself. Now the question is, can we see the map?
Presto. This is the best I can do.
Okay. Is it possible to sort of point out, orient us a little bit to what we're looking at?
Carl, can we borrow your laser pointer? Thank you. Just send Mike the bill.
And if you could also explain why these easements are beneficial to the town?
Okay. So I'll answer that question first because it's a blanket answer. So this allows us to do the wider sidewalks and provides for an amenity strip, what they call an amenity strip, on the new downtown streetscape along Main Street. So as Ms. Greaves said, it requires a two-foot easement along five properties. So first one is, this is 10 to 60 Main Street, commonly known as the Mill Building, where the CrossFit is. This is 100 Main Street, where the newly renovated duplex is. This is the church, the Federated Church. Down here is 128 Main Street, and then right here is Santander Bank on the corner.
Okay, so just two quick comments. One is that I intend to support this. I think it's important for the town to have whatever width we need here to do whatever mission we seek, but I was heartened by the town manager's presentation on Article One where some pictures of the downtown were shown, and it showed bike lanes in there. And I just want to highlight to all the residents—and again, I'm supporting this—but what we've done downtown with this plan is absolutely zero accommodations for bikes. I mean, here we talk about walking and biking, and we have done absolutely nothing there. It's a dangerous place for bike riders to go through. There's constant conflicts with cars. We have the oblique train tracks and many other issues downtown with a lot of traffic. And I'm just concerned. I just hope that we can continue to revisit that over time. Thank you.
Mr. DeSoni.
Okay. Good evening again for the, what, third time? I am asking the question, both sides of the roads, what's it going to do for curb cuts and parking issues?
Mr. Herbert?
These easements are not going to affect any kind of curb cuts or parking issue—or parking.
What's the lands that's attached to them going to be used for?
So those properties are currently those properties. I don't think they're going to change.
And if there's going to be any other changes, businesses, residents, smaller buildings coming through to go on then?
I don't know, Mark. I mean, certainly not as part of the easement plan. Certainly in the future, if there's, you know, different proposals that are put forward, that would go through the process, whether it'd go through the Planning Board or the ZBA.
So how long would actually this take, once you put the plan? How long is it going to be taken to put it into a workable site?
To make it—to make it actually happen? With—if everything works smoothly, and we all know that that happens, everything does work smoothly, I would say probably a year and a half.
Okay, and would there be any underground utilities or anything that's going to be attached to it?
Not at this section. Not with this easement.
You've had like seven questions, Mark. Let's move on, please.
I'm looking at the clock. It just stopped on me, so.
And I've—you've had like seven questions, so let's move on.
Nice beard, by the way. Good for the winter.
It's—I've had it for about two years. Thanks for noticing.
Oh, okay. Now I get the clock going. Okay, so this is going to take some time, and it's going to take a town vote, and this may be unanimous again. That's how you say the word. Thank you.
Ma'am?
John Gafford, 1 Shaw Road. I have difficulty trying to understand exactly what we're doing, but when I look at the area, like where—if I understand correctly where like Z-Breds is down at the end there, that's like butted right up to the road already. So how do you take land from that?
Mr. Herbert?
I'm sorry. I don't under—could you repeat the question again?
The building down near the Bancroft End with Z-Breds, I believe it's called?
Yep.
That's butted right up to the road already. Am I in the right location, or is that—
Right here?
Yes. Yeah. So how are you going to take an easement from that?
So there's still—there's still quite a bit of space there.
Really?
I think right now—that area right now is green space.
There is. Between the sidewalk and— There is. Okay. And my last question, I'm still having trouble picturing that one, but the last question is, if we didn't do an amenity lane, would we need to take the easement?
I'm sorry. Could you—
If we didn't do an amenity lane, would we need to take the easement?
We probably would need a smaller one, but we would still need—we would still need some easement.
How do the people along the way feel about it?
Well, that's a good question. I was waiting for that one. So—so there's five parcels. So we have had a conversation with the owner of the Mill Building, 10 through 60 Main Street. He is okay with this. I had a conversation on December 31 of last year with the new owner of the duplex at 100 Main Street, the renovated Brick Store. He has agreed to grant us that easement at no cost. I mean, we'll have to pay for the engineering. I did speak to leaders of the Federated Church, and when I talked to them, they were on board with this as well. They have changed leadership since then, and we're in the process of talking to them about it. 128 Main Street was actually included in the decision for the new building. It's actually number 42 in the site plan decision to actually grant us that easement. And then unfortunately, we haven't really been able to get to the right person at Santander. We've had to go through a few layers of corporate so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And before—Preston, before you go, I know the past few years, we've done—tried to do a better job of visuals, but it's clear that we have a little bit more improvement we can do on visuals for certain articles like this. So we're always—I told Mike before the meeting, there's always room for improvement, and this is a perfect example of, we'll try to do better next time.
Thanks, Adam.
Preston Crowe, I just wanted to say, essentially, much what you have just said, that this plan has been here for a long time, and the property owners should all know about this by now, and it was discussed extensively on the 128 Main site plan when that was before the Planning Board. So their whole project was built, was designed on the assumption that this easement would be given, so.
James Morrissey from Mr. Herbert. Call me obtuse, but I was hoping for some clarification. There was mention—
Sorry, move that mic up, sorry.
There was mention of bike lanes. Is the town intending to put bike lanes on the same level of—as the roadway with motorized vehicles, or are they going to put it up on the same side of the curb as the sidewalks on that same level?
Mr. Herbert?
Any bike amenities would be on the road at grade.
On the road. Okay. Just for the record, I oppose that. I consider it, you know, any bicyclist who is going to go out on the same tarmac, asphalt, what have you, same level with motorized vehicles, just asking for trouble. Quite frankly, for what it's worth, and again, I'm going to be the Neanderthal in the room, I'm going to recommend that all bike lanes should be on the same side of the curb as sidewalks for safety's sake. And if they have to share the same space with pedestrians, then bicycles can dismount. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney?
Kathleen Rooney, Fulton Street.
Do we need to? You can if you want to.
I just want to clarify. We are—
Mr. Shear?
I'm sorry. We are pursuing putting in an off-road trail for at least a section of the downtown, and that is still under consideration. That's not the entire length of it, but we do have a link going from Homer Ave to Front Street, for example, is part of it. And we're trying to work on the engineering to get through the rail crossing on that. But we're pursuing that. It's my understanding.
Ms. Rooney?
So I'm assuming that this eminent domain space that's green would stay green or revert back to green when you're done putting in utilities or whatever else you're doing under it? And specifically, there's two big trees in front of the Federated Church. There's another one or two big trees at the Santander Bank corner, and those are significant street trees, and we should ideally be putting more of those into this green space, not taking them out or damaging them in the process. So that's my first comment. My second one is, I love the bike lane idea because hopefully it will get people to behave less like Neanderthals downtown when they're driving. So I'd love to know about the trees.
So are the trees staying? Is that the question?
Well, I'm hoping the trees are staying, and I'm hoping we're adding more, actually.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes. So especially all the mature trees will be staying, and we'll actually be adding a significant amount of street trees. I'm looking at Peter. Do you remember the—
Thirty-five to fifty-five?
Thirty-five to fifty-five is the number.
Street trees.
Street trees.
Thank you.
For addition. All right. See no further discussion. This article seeks to accept an easement, which requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. There's that unanimous again. Article Nine, Mill Pond Park Beautification sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See, the town will vote to appropriate up to $100,000 in Community Preservation Act funds from an account to be determined to allow the beautification of Mill Pond Park and increase accessibility of the Riverwalk, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $100,000 be transferred from the Community Preservation Account or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to appropriate $100,000 for the beautification of Mill Pond Park Project. Messes Ruberton and Ladd.
And do we have a visual, too?
Yes.
So as we're loading up the visual, Mill Pond Park, if you're not familiar, is really the last connecting part to the beautiful new bridge that's been constructed. What you see here is a connector between Pine Hill Road and Water Street along Myrtle Street to really improve this park, to help make a nice connection. It includes opportunities to take pedestrians from Water Street connection to that new bridge. The new bridge is depicted at the top of the diagram here in dark gray, and as a result, it creates new pedestrian paths along the park there, and really creates a great entrance and gateway into downtown as you come down Myrtle Street from Framingham. So this is really a nice project to really tie up the Riverwalk project, and the Community Preservation Committee unanimously voted to approve this.
Thank you. Okay, you're good. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion, the town vote to appropriate up to $100,000 to Community Preservation Act general fund account to allow the Board of Selectmen to undertake construction for the beautification of Mill Pond Park, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $100,000 be transferred from the general fund account of the Community Preservation Fund with the following stipulations. The Board of Selectmen shall obtain all required town board and town department permits and approvals prior to the dispersment of any funds. The Board of Selectmen shall enter into a grant agreement with the Community Preservation Committee prior to dispersment of any funds, and unexpended funds as of June 30, 2021 being returned to their funding source. Do I have such a motion?
So moved, sorry.
Discussion. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Ten, Town Forest Restoration Project Phase Two sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See, the town will vote to appropriate up to $5,000 of Community Preservation Act historical funds to allow the Town Forest Committee to complete Phase Two of a restoration project within the Town Forest to preserve the remains of the stone bungalow, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of $5,000—up to $5,000 be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund Historical Preservation Account. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Messes Ruberton and Ladd.
We'd like to just put forth a quick amendment to the motion.
Let's go through the discussion first.
Okay. So the map here clearly illustrates off of the red trail off of Water Street. The trail has been closed for some period of time up to a stone bungalow, and you haven't been able to access it because it needs repair. And once these repairs are complete, it'll be a nice amenity to protect some historic parts of the property. I think you have another photo on the next page. So this is what we're talking about. Work has been done already to protect this site. There's a flyer in the back of the room that walks through the history of this site within the Town Forest that I hope you got a chance to look at.
to look at. But the final stone masonry is a chance to save this for hopefully ever as a nice amenity within the Town Forest. It would be some stone masonry pointing to make sure that the walls remain as-is. It's not putting a roof on it, it's not putting anything. It's mostly work to just keep it protected for as long as possible, to preserve some of the history within the Town Forest.
Hang on to that motion. Is Sam Clancy here? There he is, okay. Hi, Sam. So, edging this picture, the only reason a Phase Two cleanup, Phase Two renovation of this bungalow is possible is due to the massive cleanup effort performed by now Eagle Scout Sam Clancy, who's in the back. He's going to say hi to us in a bit. Sam is here tonight, and I wanted to share with everyone what Rob St. Germain said about Sam and this project. He contacted us in early January to say he was considering several possible Eagle projects. He lives close to the Ashland Town Forest, walks in the forest frequently, and was disturbed at how bad the stone ruins looked, all overgrown and littered with debris from long ago fire, leaf, and human litter. I told him that we could not just clean it up because the structure was unstable. I indicated this would be a lot of work. Undaunted, he agreed to take on the work, which later evolved to an even larger effort with a bench, which is equivalent to many Eagle projects by itself, and historic research. There were numerous planning meetings and work sessions throughout the year, adding up to nearly 260 hours of work. It included planning, seeking and organizing helpers, initial cleanup, attaining a grant from the Select Board and other funding, researching bench designs, drawing site plans, removal of a large steel cylinder, an old furnace, and a large quantity of structural debris, removal of invasive plants in some trees, rebuilding the chimney and further cleanup, rebuilding some window frames, I'm still not done, building 50 feet of stone wall, building forms in the jig for installing a bench and bench installation, historical research including meetings with historical society, composing a historical description, and a final report, drafting, and presentation. He's not a quitter. He worked long and hard and always with a positive attitude. Sam, would you please stand and allow us to express our appreciation for your hard work? Please.
I, I just wanted to say, this is the first time I'd done anything of this nature. I had a lot of fun with the project. I learned a lot. It would not, certainly not have been possible without the generous help and assistance, especially Mr. St. Germain, and just more in general, the members of the Town Forest Society. I've always been historically minded, and so this is pretty much the perfect project I, I could have done. I, I learned a lot of very practical skills doing this. It took me about six months, but it was definitely, definitely a good venture, and I hope that we engage in efforts to continue the work that I began. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and Rob, Rob also made sure, tell me, I have to make sure to not forget Rich Glidden, who was the volunteer mason and the DPW for all their support. So with that, we will have a substitute motion, but let's just have the comments first.
Just real quick.
You know, thanks for paying attention, because I forgot the motion. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion. And I'm just going to make the change right in the motion since we're reading it. The, the issue is, this money, this funding is requested to come from the Historic Preservation Account, and one of the statutory requirements is that any funds that come from the Historic Preservation Account of the CPC must be endorsed by the Historic, Historical Society, the Historic Commission, Committee. And we don't have a functioning one right now, so that was not possible. So to avoid any future issues, CPC has asked that we just take the funds from the general account. So the motion will read that the town vote to appropriate up to $5,000 in Community Preservation Act Funds to allow the Town Forest Committee to complete Phase Two of a restoration project within the Town Forest to preserve the remains of the stone bungalow, and that to meet the appropriation, the sum of up to 5,000 be transferred from the Community Preservation General Account with the following stipulations: The Town Forest Committee shall obtain all required Town Board and Town Department permits and approvals prior to the dispersment of any funds. The Town Forest Committee shall enter into a grant agreement with the Community Preservation Committee prior to dispersment of any funds, and unexpended funds as of June 30th, 2021 being returned to their funding sources. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mitchell, you're going to jump the line? Again, you're sitting up front. You can jump the line.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to speak on behalf of residents who enjoy hiking in the, in our beautiful Town Forest. I would like to acknowledge the work of the Town Forest Committee and all of the Eagle Scouts that have done numerous projects in the, in the Town Forest. Your service to our community is greatly appreciated. The Select Board requests that town meeting vote to support Article 10.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. St. Germain?
I just wanted to add real quick, Phase One of this project, which Sam was responsible for, made, not only cleaned the building up, but it made it safe. This chimney over here was in the process of falling down. We had recommendations from the DPW that maybe the best thing to do would be to bulldoze the structure. But it is a historic structure, and we didn't know how storied it was when we took on the project. So we've now rebuilt some of the windows, as you can see, rebuilt the fireplace with the help of a professional masons, Rich Glidden, who grew up in town and volunteered his time. Phase Two, which we're seeking the money for now, will cap these walls, all of the walls, with a masonry cap and some impervious area, which will prevent water from infiltrating into the very old masonry that's there, and it should preserve it for a good long time to come.
Thank you. Dr. Hoffman?
Thank you. I am now wearing my archaeology cap.
Thank you. I was waiting for that.
All right, yeah. I'm not sure why the gentleman who were presenting earlier said that the pathways have been blocked. They're not. I took a tour group up there on Sunday of last weekend. What you may not be aware of is that entire hillside on both sides of the structure has literally dozens of Native American stone monuments on it. When I saw that a wall had been constructed there behind the bench, I became concerned as to where the stones were coming from to build that wall. These structures should not be disturbed or stones taken from them for further construction. I would be willing, if you want me to, to go out there with some caution tape and flag off the area that should be avoided on both sides of the hill if you are going to add more stones to this to cap it. But those structures are very sensitive. Native Americans have been out there with me to view them, and they've confirmed that that's what this is, and I would urge that any further construction not disturb those monuments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
Paul Pohoviac, Forty Lake View. I just saw this structure about 10 years ago, and it was in deplorable condition. I think it's fantastic. It makes me feel good that a, a young man from town can really put a tremendous effort in it at no pay and dig in and make an unbelievable change. And the fact that Rich Glidden, who I know personally, you know, lent his masonry skills, I just think it warms my heart to know the people, I know quite a few people in this town who really put out. You know, they really pull for this town, and they don't get any fiscal reimbursement. It's just, I think this kid should get the Medal of Freedom instead of Tiger Woods.
That's a little bit beyond our scope, but the sentiment is appreciated. Seeing no further discussion, this will require simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 11, Decreased Demand Fees Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. This article is being withdrawn. Typically, we'll just move to the next one, but Mr. Herbert asked for special dispensation to explain why. So, Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this article was originally initiated after, we've received several complaints back in May from people who had received demand fees on their excise tax bills. Several of them claimed that they had not received the initial excise tax bill and questioned the, you know, the methodology of applying that demand fee, and then also the fairness of applying that demand fee. So there's a lot of reasons why we, as a town, cannot waive fees of that nature. One is because of the level of the fee, which was $30. One of the things that we had proposed as a potential solution to this was to reduce that to $15. Since that time, we've received some more information that indicates that there could be a solution here that would be a better solution. So the Board has voted to withdraw this in an effort to explore that solution a little bit more and potentially bring something forward at the annual town meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Article 12, Net Zero Resolution. To see if the town will adopt the resolution to adopt a net zero emissions goal, and you know I'm not going to read this, as printed in your handbooks, or pass any vote or take any action. See, if, if Town Council Me were here, she'd probably make me read this. But she's not here tonight, so we're going to just get away with reading it. Or pass any vote or take any action relative thereon. The Finance Committee recommends the town adopt the resolution as presented while recognizing that there are unidentified costs and savings that will be considered as the plan evolves. Mr. Marshquist?
Mr. Moderator, can I introduce this on behalf of the Select Board?
Mr. Marshquist will give you a presentation.
I'm okay with, with Rob speaking a little bit first.
I understand. The Select Board has an opportunity to speak through and discussion.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Select Board for their support for this initiative. So I'd also like to thank all of the residents who have come to our meetings. There's been a lot of interest in this, and it's, we always welcome visitors and appreciate those who took time to attend our meetings. So let me start with a little bit of background. First slide here, okay. So in October 2018, the International Panel on Climate Change released its report titled Global Warming of 1.5 Degrees Celsius. Over 1,000 experts from more than 80 countries contributed to this assessment. To arrive at consensus with this many scientists, their projections are by nature conservative. Where they tend to err is on the side of underestimating the impacts of climate change. For that reason, the dire tone of this report raised alarm bells. A key finding is that we need to restrict average temperature rise to 1.5 degrees Celsius to avoid catastrophic impacts from climate change. In order to do that, we need to make transformative changes within 11 years with the goal of reaching net zero by 2040 to 2055. Next slide. So why is it important to limit global warming? Just half a degree Celsius means vastly different consequences for humanity and the planet. 10 million more people exposed to sea level rise without adaptation, including some in this state. 60 million more people exposed to drought, and many of the humanitarian conflicts occurring around the world, including the Syrian conflict, have drought as a causal or contributing factor. With coral reefs, instead of 70 to 90% being eliminated, which is what we're on track for now, with two degrees warming, it would be 99%, virtually all coral reef wiped out. Next slide, thanks. Around the world, countries and cities are responding to this crisis. Many towns in Massachusetts have adopted net zero resolutions. Businesses are also making ambitious commitments to reach carbon neutrality. While the US has pulled out of the Paris Accord, municipal leaders across the country are still in, accounting for 65% of the US population and 60%, 68% of the US economy. In Ashland, we have made great progress, joining the Green Communities Program and making efficiency upgrades. We have installed close to 17 megawatt of solar on schools, homes, and businesses in town. We also took an important step of aggregating our electricity, contract and opting for 100% renewable energy, which saved residents money and reduced our emissions. All of this is impressive, but it still doesn't get us to where we need to be. The warrant article we are now considering would set an ambitious goal for the town of eliminating or offsetting all greenhouse gas emissions by 2040. This would include those emissions from buildings, transportation, industry, agriculture, and waste streams. This covers municipal emissions but also extends to households and businesses, which were not covered by the Green Communities Act. The next slide shows, becoming a net zero involves three major actions: reducing energy use through efficiency, generating more onsite renewable energy, and offsetting the remaining energy use by purchasing offsite renewables or credits for activities such as planting trees, which help to sequester carbon. Becoming a net zero community does not mean that every home or building in town has to reach net zero, but it requires the balance of all emissions in town to equal zero. I'd like to talk about the process a little bit. So the first steps here are actually complete, and others are in progress. If the town commits to the net zero goal, our committee will work to develop a net zero plan to bring before the town in the fall. That plan will be comprised of a greenhouse gas inventory, which will list the major sources of our emissions, and a list of mitigation measures which may be implemented to reduce them. For each measure, the impact on emissions, costs, and other benefits will need to be considered. The measures in the plan will be implemented over time based on town priorities and their impacts. For those measures which require town approval, such as a zoning change, there will likely be a feedback process similar to any warrant article for town meeting. Finally, we will continue to adapt, and as we learn more, we'll have new additions to the plan over time. The last slide here. So to review, there is strong consensus from the scientific community that we must take transformational changes in order to limit catastrophic impacts of global warming. Ashland is doing a lot already, but we need to do more. By establishing this goal and planning towards it, we hope to set Ashland on a path towards significantly reducing our emissions, so that 20 years from now, we can look back and say that we did everything that we could to protect the earth for future generations. We ask you to vote yes on Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt? To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion, the town vote to adopt the resolution as presented. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
And Mr. Shear, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've passed, we've passed many important articles today in my, tonight. In my opinion, this is the, the most important article we'll be dealing with tonight. Just briefly, the genesis of this, for those who may not be aware, a few years ago, some members of the Select Board, Yolanda and I, went to a municipal climate summit and came back with a number of measures to discuss, and subsequently, the Select Board identified net zero initiative as being the most important next step that Ashland should take to address the challenges posed by climate change. That's probably one of the most important efforts that we can take as individuals and as a town at this level. And subsequently, we asked the Sustainability Committee to investigate that, and they came up with this plan, and this plan of action, which we reviewed with them. And you may recall that last, last town meeting, we, there was a public information session at town meeting, and this is the, the follow-up step. And I certainly want to thank Matt and the other members of the Sustainability Committee for their great efforts and their willingness to move onward with this. We also, the good, other great news is that we have a sustainability coordinator who will be on board soon to help implement this plan. And so on behalf of the Select Board, we ask you to support this resolution and the, the measures that will be taken as a result of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. One of the things I've done as, as moderators wherever possible, try to solicit input from everyone in the community, not just those who are eligible to vote. That includes the younger members of our community, and I believe we have another one up at the microphone who'd like to share some thoughts. Please.
I'm Anya Rithinjovani, and I live at 10 Arbor Road. And I just wanted to say that could you vote for this, because it's humanity's future that you're voting for?
Mr. DeZoni?
Yeah, thank you. That's the future. That's got to be neat in this. Net zero, climate control, climate warming. And our wonderful federal government went backwards covering out of the Paris talks with them. And I'm not going to go there. I'm just saying, I'm going to want to come in and say, this is a good idea. We also have, they have businesses that can come in and become building net zero conducted in this too. But overall, sustainability has come up strong on this, to make this warming out of it. And we're going to work to be a net zero, climate controlled, climate warned, warned and educated community. So let's vote this in. So let's vote this in.
Yes, James Morrissey, Voyagers Lane. True to form, I'm going to continue in my contrarian, knuckle-dragging ways and ask this question. Could it be reasonably assumed that this is a prelude to, in the future, the imposition of some kind of municipal carbon tax on individual households, individual residences?
Within the community?
Yes.
I would typically say it's beyond the scope of the article, since Mr. Herbert's shrugging.
Well, it mentions households. It mentions households.
Let me finish, but since Mr. Herbert's shrugging his shoulders, say, I don't know, I'm going to let him answer the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's way too early to speculate on how we can achieve this goal, but I can speak for myself. I would be looking at proposing anything reasonable to help us get to this goal now or in the future.
Well, I, carbon taxes seem to be the, one of the, one of the top, you know, one of the solutions du jour. So what's to prevent the, either the state or the town, with the permission of the state, in the long run, we're talking 20-year horizon here, in the long run, imposing a carbon tax on individual households?
I'm going to just cut you a little bit. We're not going to contemplate what the state could, what the state could or couldn't do.
Fair enough. I only ask because, because the resolution mentions households, not just what the, what the town as a discreet, you know, entity is proposing for its own operations with regard to town hall and the school systems and so forth. We're talking about how it's going to regulate households through policy. Thank you.
Mr. Shear, please.
Just, let's keep in mind that this is a resolution for a plan. The plan will have to be approved. There will be a public process to work out all these matters and issues. I'm not saying that some of them may not change your life, and we may need to be changing people's lifestyle here, but this will all be public approved. So what you're asked to vote on right now is a resolution to do a plan, and the plan will be, most of it, I believe, will be coming back to town meeting, so.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Shear. Ladies, are you speaking individually or as a group?
As a group.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Ariana Senyu, 100 Souberry Road. On behalf of the Environmental Action Club at Ashland High School, we ask that you vote to support the net zero bylaw here in Ashland. Use your power of voting to make a positive impact on all our futures. Help my generation and generations after have a foundation for creating a healthier and cleaner earth. So thank you.
You're the only one speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sir?
Ashwara Thindhanani, 10 Arbor Road. I am a member of the Sustainability Committee, but I'm right now commenting as a private citizen. My reading of this resolution is that it is a non-binding resolution. It sets a goal and a vision for the community, and any plans or actions that would come out of it really are directional, and anything concrete that comes out of it, I would expect would have to be voted anyway.
Thank you. Joe?
Joel Arbeitman, Woodbridge Lane. I have spent a considerable amount of time meeting with the Sustainability Committee and talking with various members over the last year or so. And sometimes in their meetings, it comes up, gee, those are great ideas, but I don't know if we can get it past the town meeting. Maybe we should temper ourselves a little bit, ease back on the, on the gas pedal just a little bit, so that we can get things passed, which is a very pragmatic approach.
The electric gas pedal, right?
The electric gas pedal. Thank you. I appreciate the qualification. No interruptions. So what I want to say to the committee, and I hope others' speakers will endorse this, I cannot conceive of a greater threat to the planet and to everybody: future generations, current generations, animals, plant life, fish life, everything. And in my view, the right approach, and I hope we all encourage the committee to do everything they possibly can do, let us say no if it's something so severe that we need to back it off a little bit. But I would like to encourage them to put on their thinking caps and go get them and do everything possible because of the desperateness of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Sir?
Chuck Lids, 150 Oregon Road. I am one of the Sustainability Committee, and I do want to assure people that both, we will work very hard on this to make this a reality, and nothing's going to happen until the town meeting approves it.
Thank you. Roberta?
Hi, I'm just speaking again on behalf of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. We voted unanimously to endorse this on Monday and urge everyone to vote in favor of this. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support for this, and I really want to thank the members of the Sustainability Committee for all of their hard work and their leadership on this issue.
Thank you, Roberta.
Tricia Gendel, 6 Rebenekka Road. I just wanted to comment on the town of Ashland, really, that for years, I have no idea how many years, but we have been passing measures at town meeting, from becoming part of the green community, to issues of solar, to protecting our water, to creating trails through Ashland, all kinds of things that are to better our community. And I've always been really impressed by this group, to see the vision about where we want to go. So I think this is just the next step in that. It's a big step, and it says who we are as a community and about who we want to be in the future and how we're looking out for both our green space and our kids. So I would urge everyone to vote for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
Kyle Allers, Tiller Drive. First of all, I just want to say how thrilled I am to not be the youngest person in the room tonight, so thank you. I'm also a member of the Sustainability Committee, but also speaking as an individual tonight. I grew up in Ashland, and I've been really proud of a lot of the things we've done in recent years. This will be my last town meeting. In January, I'll be moving to California, where, as many of you know, the forest fires and earthquakes that are absolutely connected to global warming are raging, and people there are experiencing much more severe conditions than we do here in suburban Massachusetts. So I would really encourage people to keep that in mind as they vote on this tonight. Many people who know me will know that I never think that anything we do on climate is radical enough. The children and grandchildren of everyone in this room are counting on us to take more drastic action to protect them. So I hope you guys keep that in mind after I leave and continue the good work that's being done in Ashland. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. That's one vote. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. Like Articles 5 and 6, Articles 13 and 14 are related, and we will take them up together. After the introduction of Article 13, we'll have an explanation of both articles followed by a single discussion. After discussion, we'll vote on Article 13, after which I'll introduce Article 14 and seek an immediate motion and vote on Article 14. Article 13, Bylaw Change: Replace Board of Selectmen with Select Board in General Bylaws sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to amend the Ashland Home Rule Charter, and to see if the town will vote to amend the Ashland General Bylaws to replace all gendered references to Board of Selectmen with Select Board or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Kinsman?
Thank you, Mr. Smirek. Thank you, Mr. Smirek.
Her mic's not working.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. On June 5th, the Board of Selectmen voted and approved to change its name to the Select Board, a gender-neutral name. We felt that as the town's leadership, it was important that our name reflect the inclusiveness of our community that we represent. The Board of Selectmen was also the only board or committee in Ashland that was not gender-neutral. Ashland is not alone in this initiative. As of this past August, 99 communities in the Commonwealth have approved or are in the process of changing their name to a gender-neutral one. So Ashland is not the first, nor will it probably be the last. This warrant article takes the next steps in the process following our vote on June 5th by changing the names in our bylaws and paving the way to be reflected in the town's charter. We ask for your support of this article and the following article, which makes a change in our zoning bylaw as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion to the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature to amend the town of Ashland Home Rule Charter to replace all gendered references to Board of Selectmen with Select Board, and further that the town votes to amend the Ashland General Bylaws to replace all gendered references to Board of Selectmen with Select Board. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion, and this will be discussion for both articles.
On Article 14, I'm Preston Crow, Chair of the Planning Board.
We'll get to, we'll get to that on 14. Right, right after I introduce it, we'll give the, get the Planning Board's report.
Okay.
Seeing none, this will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article 13, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Article 14, Zoning Bylaw Change: Replace Board of Selectmen with Select Board in the Zoning Bylaws sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote, to see if the town, to see if the town will vote to amend the Ashland zoning bylaws to replace all gendered references to Board of Selectmen with Select Board or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Yes. Being a zoning article, the Planning Board is required to conduct a public hearing on all zoning articles and make a recommendation at town meeting. The Planning Board held this public hearing on November 14th after the required advertisement and other notifications. The Planning Board voted unanimously to support the amendment with a 3-0 vote.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. I'll entertain a motion, after which we'll move to an immediate vote. If the town adopt the amendment to the zoning bylaws as printed in Article 14 in the warrant, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Given that this changes to zoning bylaws, it will require a 2/3 majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. And opposed. Yeah, I see one. I declare a 2/3 majority, so that passes. Article 15, Zoning Bylaw. Amend industrial uses in the commercial highway, sorry, amend industrial uses in the commercial highway, commercial village, and commercial neighborhood districts sponsored by the Planning Board. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Ashland Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 282, Section 3, as is printed in your handbooks, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Greaves?
Sorry. This, this is a zoning change that I know our zoning board has looked at quite a bit, and we, as a Select Board, do support this. The major change is that it is taking out mini-storage fair warehouse facilities and construction yards from our industrial-use zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Yes, this article was discussed a number of times in the Planning Board. We held our public hearing on October 24th, and the Planning Board voted to recommend town meeting vote in favor of this article unanimously with a 4-0 vote.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town adopt the amendment to the zoning bylaws as printed in Article 15 in the warrant. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Discussion. Mr. Dissoni.
Yep. Zonings. I've been doing this for years and following it for that long time. I will, I bet it's going to be a procedure question, if it's okay, Mr. Moderator.
A procedure question? Sure.
A procedure. I asked, I asked why at the planning board, I ask here in town meeting in front to the Select Board.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm going to ask the Select Board a procedure question on this.
You have to direct all your questions to me.
Okay. May I ask the Select Board a procedure question?
So through me to the Select Board?
Through you. Can I do that?
Well, why don't you ask me the question, and then we'll direct.
Can I ask about a procedure for this article?
A procedure for this article?
Yes.
That's not the Select Board's purview as the Planning, I mean, what you need to understand. There are, there are legal requirements for any zoning articles, and Town Council, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, you can just nod that all the appropriate requirements have been followed for this article? Okay.
Okay. Let me just put it in a simpler way. Between the Select Board and Planning Board, who brought this up in front the first in the agenda item in their meetings?
That's not relevant to the article.
Okay. Now, to have it, what's the vote number for this?
It's zoning, so it's 2/3 requirement.
Okay. And it's been through the public sources and all that stuff?
It's been through a public hearing. The Planning Board has held a hearing and provided their response just moments ago.
Just moments ago. It's going to be a zoning, hi, how you doing? It's going to be zoning change, and it's going to be a by right, yes or no?
It's, there's no by right or not. It's a zoning change.
Right. But if it's storage and construction is going to be taken out, what might be taking its place?
It's what's being taken out, Mark. It's got nothing to do with what's taking its place. It's no longer being allowed in these, these zones. Okay, and you're, since your 30 seconds over, your limit, please take a seat, and if you have another further question after discussion, you can come back up.
I probably won't be discussing, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy Syed, 106 High Street. Could I get a quick clarification on what those industrial uses are that are going to be stricken and changed?
Sure.
The CH, the CV, the CN?
I'll defer to the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you.
Preston Crow, Chair of the Planning Board. The chart here, for those who aren't used to reading our zoning table, it lists a number of different zoning districts, and the particular ones here, CH, CV, and CN are different commercial zoning districts. I wish we had a map here in front of us. Most of this is along 135 and, and 126, and the discussion, and as you'll see, it's changing from yes, or where it says PB, that means by special permit through the Planning Board, to no in those districts for those particular uses. This doesn't affect anybody who's already using those uses in these districts. It just prevents new permits within those districts. And it's still allowed in industrial districts.
Thank you, Preston.
Marina Crickler, 120 Prospect Street. So I guess it's kind of getting to my question, which was, would this potentially prevent something like another zone, or another storage facility showing up in front of the middle school? And it sounds like maybe the answer to that is yes? Okay.
I think where there are more room, it would prevent it from happening again.
Right.
Right, Preston?
Oh, sorry.
Right.
That is in one of the zones where it's being changed to no.
Okay. Okay. And then I'm, I guess I'm wondering if someone could clarify where the purely industrial, like if someone could give an example of what a purely industrial area would be, like what street?
Mr. Crow?
The examples of industrial include McGonco. There's, there are several streets off of 126 that aren't, don't front on 126 that are industrial, and I believe the south side of Pleasant Street is still zoned industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a, oh, you wanted to come back up?
Yes.
Okay, you can, you started with a minute.
Yep. I would like to thank the moderator for letting me come back up. My, my quick comment, this has got answered. Thank you.
Given that this changes zoning bylaws, it requires 2/3 majority. We'll start with a vote by cards. All those in favor of the motion on this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. I declare a 2/3. There be no further business. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your cards. Meeting adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.